Good morning. I want to welcome everybody to the council meeting today. It's Wednesday, April 18th. The council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, Friday at 10:00 a.m. All of our council meetings and committee meetings are open to the public and you're welcome to attend. With that said, if I could get some quiet sergeants, if we could get a little order, I'd like to ask Mr. Clerk if you would please call the roll.
Hello, I'm Buskay and Ocardness England or Garcia, Weeza, Coret, Corrigan, Labanche, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Zion, Weston, ten members present and Coram, Mr. President.
First order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Parks moves, Mr. Coret seconds, next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Zion moves, Mr. Reyes seconds. And that brings us where?
Mr. President, that brings us to our agenda. There is a request from the department to continue item one to June 20th and item two to April 25.
Okay, without objection.
Very good, sir.
That brings us to where?
Items three through seven. They're items noticed for public hearing. We do not have any cards on items three through seven, sir.
Members specials, three through seven. Okay, I don't see any. So on those items, why don't we open the roll? Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Okay, and those were items three through seven?
Correct, sir.
Next section?
Mr. President, items eight through 15 are items for which public hearings have been held.
Specials members, Mr. Parks?
I'd just like to make a verbal amendment to number nine for Ms. Perry and just ask that LADWP report to her committee regarding this report as they did not respond to the original request.
Okay, duly noted. Mr. Zion, I didn't hear you. Zion is calling item nine, Mr. Englander.
Number 13.
Thirteen, Mr. Englander. Any other specials?
Is that what you were gonna call?
Okay, on the remaining items, why don't we open the roll? Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That brings us to where, Mr. Clerk?
Mr. President, that brings us to items 16 through 30. 16 through 30 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, without objection, those items are now before us. Members, any specials? Okay, do we have cards, Mr. Clerk?
Yes, sir, we do. We have cards on items 16, 20, 22, 23, 24, 27, and 28.
Okay, on the remaining items, let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Okay, that brings us to the next section, and that is what, Mr. Clerk?
Mr. President, those are items 31 and 32. They're items scheduled for closed session. Would you like to hold them on the desk?
Yeah, why don't we hold them on the desk until the chair of that committee arrives? So that brings us to what point?
Mr. President, that brings us to either presentations or general public comment.
Okay, at this point, what we're gonna do until I get a thumbs up from the individuals that are doing the presentations, we'll begin our public, general public comment portion of today's council. Okay, Mr. Corets, I'm gonna call three, Mr. Corets, I'm gonna call just three public speakers and then I will go to you. So at this point, I want Mr. Garcia, it's good to see you, Mr. Garcia, please come forward. After Mr. Garcia, Bill Hui, and then Louis, I think it's Eisenstein, so please come, Daniel Garcia, please come forward for a public comment. And I wanna, I wanna see Mr. Hui and Eisenstein. Welcome, Mr. Garcia.
Thank you, Mr. President and City Council. I'm here because I'm very concerned about the job programs for the city of LA. I went online for summer job program and I didn't find any summer job that are for people with disabilities. And I'm here to ask the City Council to provide information about summer jobs that can be done for people with disabilities. However, there is, there is summer jobs that are for teenagers, they are for senior citizens, but not for us. I think, I think the City Council owe us, the City of Community, to participate in a greater share, in a greater share for, for summer jobs. You are the guy, you are, you are our City Council, we provide the information to you. And I, and to put it, to put it this way, I'm unemployed right now, I'm looking for jobs, but I'm the someone that give it up to the City Council. So if you, and I'm going to give my management to you so you can see my proof potential about having a job anywhere. So please, take a look at my management and maybe you'll be happy to satisfy no question. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia Sargent, if you could take that from him. Mr. Bill Hui, please come forward.
Hi, good morning, Council President Weston and members of the L.A. City Council. My name is Bill Hui. I'm the president of Fair Housing Coalition. We're a landlord rights organization that believes in equality under the law for landlords and renters, fairhousingcoalition.com. I want to bring up the speed on the REAP law. I really believe most of the council members are being misled by the L.A. Housing Department. I've talked to people who wrote the REAP law, and the original idea was to get the criminal landlords, and there's good and bad landlords, there's good and bad tenants, you know, to get the criminal landlords out of business. And what happened is, the city made so much money, LHD made so much money confiscating rents, it's like an animal that's finally had a taste for blood and tasted blood. Now they're going after mom and pop landlords, and what they're doing is they're putting them in REAP for little minor things like the old wood frame windows. You roll them up, they don't stay up by themselves, that's a REAP, you're staying in REAP. And also, you have a lot of poor people who have had babies and they're living in small one-bedroom apartments, and these apartments take a lot of wear and tear. So on any given day, a door handle might break or something, very minor stuff. They're keeping landlords in REAP because they're stealing the money. Now, what happens is, that's driving landlords out of business. And once, most of the poor people who live in L.A., the real poor people who have $400 a month rent, they live in these older buildings. So you have these landlords going out of business, and that's creating more homeless people. So if you really care about homeless people, I know the city's building a lot of apartments and all that, but the really poor, older, senior citizens can't afford those rents. The city should work in cooperation with the landlords and not keep us in REAP when the inspector comes out and he finds a missing screw that fell out a few minutes ago and keep the whole building in REAP and keep confiscating the rent money for a little minor code violation that's not a habitability issue. And that's the majority of the landlords are in REAP, so you should investigate who's in REAP and for what reasons, and you're being misled by the housing department, I'm telling you. Thank you very much.
Okay, Louis Eisenstein, come forward.
Hello, members of the City Council. I'm here representing Fair Housing Coalition, Inc., we're a group of housing providers dedicated to making fair laws for business owners, the smallest business owner in the city of L.A., which are the housing providers. I just want to let you know, the city lost a landmark ruling last year, Darwish versus City of L.A. This court case has wide ramifications. It's basically been stating that the housing department has been citing landlords with building code, even though they're not building code inspectors. The housing department is basically coming up, using their own imagination, what they could cite for, and they're basing it on building codes, but they're not sworn building inspectors, they're sworn housing department inspectors. That's a totally different thing. I've had more than two housing inspectors tell me during an inspection that if it were up to them, they'd never invest in the city of L.A. because you guys have to deal with people like me, and I could do whatever I want. I've had some housing inspectors tell me personally, why don't you sue the city? Why isn't anyone suing the city? Because what we're doing is so horrible. And, well, now we're suing the city, now we're doing what certain field inspectors are telling us to do, because even they feel guilty about what's going on in the housing department. The REAP program, there's 1,800 properties in REAP right now. Most of these, I say 90% of these buildings are four units and under. I don't think this was, this program was created to fight people on retirement, on fixed incomes, making $30,000 a year on a three, four unit building. I think this program was made for slum lords, I mean, the few slum lords that are out there. There also has to be something for landlords, for slum tenants. There are many slum tenants that destroy the apartment, that break things, that, you know, and landlords always get cited for it. Tenants never get cited for it. Landlords get cited for tenants' damage. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, Mr. Corets, you can prepare, but before we do that, Mr. Krikorian, Mr. Krikorian, we held items 31 and 32 on the desk. Is it possible that maybe we can dispense of one of them or both of them now, or do you want to?
Thank you, Mr. President. We can dispose of number 31 now. It's a payment of a settlement in a matter involving a police officer who's been reinstated. Unless there's questions that members have that need to be discussed in closed session, that was discussed in budget and finance, and I would ask for your eye vote in support of the recommendation. Number 32, I'm trying to verify a little bit more information about it before we proceed, so if we can continue to hold that on the desk, I'd like to go ahead with number 31.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk?
Mr. President, in regards to item one, in the case entitled Michael Slider versus City of Los Angeles at All, there is a recommendation for settlement in the amount of $25,000.
Okay, no speakers on the queue on this item. Let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Mr. Corets, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. We're told by an ancient text and a modern song alike that to everything there is a season and a time to every purpose under heaven. Now today is the season for remembrance. Now is the time for remembrance of terror, tragedy, and murderous evil beyond belief. For now, we're called upon to remember, and we choose to remember, the unbelievable pain and costs of the Holocaust. Holocaust Remembrance Day, otherwise known as Yom HaShoa, begins tonight, the evening of Wednesday, April 18th, and ends in the evening of Thursday, April 19th. As most of you know, I lost members of my family in the Holocaust, and the same is equally true for thousands of Los Angelinos. Others came here who escaped the horror, and still others, people from Los Angeles living here now, risked their lives or otherwise labor to stop the genocide and tyranny that was Hitler and his Holocaust. So Los Angeles still feels the stamp of those days. So this is the time, this is our season of contemplation about ourselves and humanity concerning what has happened and what never may be allowed to happen again. We each can contemplate, we each can participate in this day in our own way. So for example, I'd like to tell you what happens in Austin, Texas. In 2003, a group of students at the University of Texas at Austin established the White Rose Society. Austin's White Rose Society was named after the heroic philosophy students in Munich, along with their professor, practiced secret but nonviolent acts of resistance against the Nazi regime in the midst of World War II, and they all paid with their lives. The White Rose Society that now exists in Austin is dedicated to Holocaust remembrance and genocide awareness, and so every year at this time, the White Rose Society hands out 10,000 white roses on campus, representing the approximate number of people killed at Auschwitz every single day. There are many ways of memorializing and remembering. At this time, across the city, across the nation, and around the world, people condemn the horrors of the Holocaust and honor those who were sacrificed. Individually and collectively, we promise never to forget and never again to allow such monstrosities to happen. Here at City Hall, we have a brief presentation and remembrance, and so I'm honored and moved to introduce two special guests. First, we are privileged to have Rabbi Joseph Kenevsky from Benet David. He is here from the Pico Robertson area of my district where I grew up, and he is greatly respected in the community and treasured for his insight and leadership. I've asked him here to help put in perspective what perhaps could never truly be measured, and that is the obscenity that was the Holocaust and what was wrought and that that might be learned. Rabbi Kenevsky.
Thank you, Councilman Corets. Thank you to all the members of the City Council and everyone who is here. Holocaust Remembrance Day was instituted by the State of Israel in 1953, at a time when survivors of the Holocaust were still largely not speaking about what it was that befell them. But the Knesset of the State of Israel recognized that history would need this kind of day, and when it would be that the survivors were ready to speak about their experiences, they would, and the world would listen, and we would all learn and grow. There are several reasons why it's so important that this story, the story of the Holocaust, be told and be told every year. One is a reason that's particular to the Jewish people. We have a visceral, primal responsibility to know our story. When World War II began, there were nine million Jews living in parts of Europe that soon were Nazi occupied. All of them were in one way or another dehumanized, mostly through being taken to ghettos and/or to concentration camps. By the time the war was over, of those nine million Jews, six million were dead. In Poland alone, where the pre-war Jewish population was 3.3 million souls, by the time the war was over, that number was 300,000. To paraphrase the Passover Seder, we Jews know that if we were there, if we were living at that time, it would have been us and our parents and our grandparents and our brothers and our sisters and our sons and our daughters who would have died in concentration camps or in the woods, being shot by, by the SS. But we don't tell the story only because the Jewish people has a responsibility for ourselves to know the story. We tell the story because we firmly believe that all of us need to know the story. We need to know the story because it's a story about how irrationally one group of people can hate another group of people because of their ethnicity, because of their nationality, because of their sexual orientation. All of these groups were victims of the Nazis. We tell the story because it forces us to acknowledge that there is a dark side to human nature, a dark side that you and I also possess, and that we always must maintain vigilance so that it doesn't come to the surface. We have to tell the story because it's about the terrible things that can happen when people are indifferent to the suffering of other groups.
No, please continue.
Okay, my, my son, Adin, who's now studying in Israel, was in Poland with his, with his school a few months ago, and one of the most shocking things that he reported to his parents after the trip was over was they visited a forest outside a town in Poland where all the, all the Jews, all the towns Jews had been taken and had been shot, and the most shocking thing was that there was no way to get to this forest without walking through the center of town. Everyone saw, everyone knew, and one of the reasons we tell the story of the Holocaust is so that we understand the lethal price that simple indifference to the suffering of others can exact. And the third reason we tell the story is that it reminds us of the greatness of the human spirit. Telling the story of the Holocaust gives us the opportunity to tell the story of someone named Lubah, who was a camp nurse in a concentration camp of Bergen-Belsen, who risked her life throughout the, throughout the war to save 54 orphaned children who were in the camp together with her. It gives us the opportunity to tell the story of a Dutch Calvinist preacher named Fritz the Wanderer, who was so called because he always, one step ahead of the Nazis, went from parish to parish in order to urge people to save Jews, to hide them in their homes, and to risk their own lives in doing so. And Fritz the Wanderer, this Calvinist preacher, was responsible for many hundreds of lives being saved. It gives us the opportunity to tell the story of Raoul Wallenberg, a Swedish diplomat stationed in Budapest, who put hundred, 100,000 Jews under the protection of the Swedish government and literally went to the trains where Jews were about to be deported to their deaths, pulled them off the trains. Raoul Wallenberg ultimately paid for his bravery and his courage with his life. And we tell the story of the Holocaust every year to remember how great, how courageous, how deep the human soul can be, how much we can care about one another, how far we can go to help one another. That is a vitally important thing to remember whenever we are living, wherever we are living. And finally, we tell the story of the Holocaust every year to pay homage to people like Anne Frank, who, together with her family, was famously in hiding in Denmark until they were removed, and ultimately all but Anne's father, Otto, were killed. Anne Frank wrote in her diary, "I still believe, in spite of everything, that people really are good at heart, and the skies will be bright, and it will all come right, and a springtime of peace will start." She did not see that springtime of peace. All of us who are committed to seeing that the world heads in that direction need to remember the darkest chapters of our history in order so that we may come to the light. Thank you.
No, thank you. And Mr. Corets, I have Mr. Rosendahl, unless you?
I have one other speaker, and I'd also like to say what Rabbi Kenevsky said about the difficulty in survivors being able to speak about this was definitely true. My father died a little over 30 years after the Holocaust, and in those 30 years, he was never able to tell me anything about what he had been through, and his sister never told me anything about his sister, who would have been my aunt, and could never even speak her name up until his death over 30 years later. Now I'd like to have our second speaker, who is Jay Greens, I'm sorry, my staff person, Jay Greenstein, wrong name, Gene Greenstein. He is a living testimony for survival, for he embodies remarkably what a human being can do in the face of the grimmest and most formidable odds. Gene Greenstein fought in the resistance against the Nazi regime, infiltrated the German army, and even was able to infiltrate the most malignant of entities, the SS, and in doing so, saved lives through his near miraculous life of survival and triumph. And now it's our opportunity to hear him speak.
Good afternoon. Thank you for inviting me, and I appreciate the introduction. Anyway, I was born in Czechoslovakia, that turned out to be Hungary in 1939, March 15th. My father was an officer in the Austrian army and was quite well-respected with many, many medals. He practiced dentistry in my hometown, and we had a fairly good life, even when Poland, the Germans, came to Poland and Russia, we still, the Hungarian Jews, because at that time we became part of Hungary, had a fairly free life. We were, my father practiced dentistry. Till 1944, March the 15th, when the Germans took over from the Hungarian government, they deposed the region and started putting in their own Nazi Hungarians. So they started ghettoizing most of Hungary, and since we were a northeastern part of Hungary at that time, we were one of the Hungary at that time, we were one of the first ones to be ghettoized. I personally was the first one to suffer from anybody else because I had a Christian girlfriend, who was a... Actually, she was an assistant to my father in the dental office. She was a very pretty girl, and she had many suitors, but she happened to like me. I was fairly tall, and some people said probably good-looking. We got along, but because of that, I made many enemies. Those who liked her couldn't wait till somewhere in March. I was picked up by a German SS trooper and two Hungarian Nazis and tied my hands, my back, my feet, and I had to run as much as I could, and I was beaten by a rifle butt and taken to the temple, where they asked permission from the officer to have me executed in a cemetery that was nearby. However, the officer, who was whispering in his ear, looked around, and he happened to be my classmate. And he looks at the guy, tells him, "Oh, this guy, I'm going to take care of him." And this happened to be in front of the synagogue. He took me into the vestibule. I waited for a little while, and then he came over to me. His name is Hans-Karl Schleyer. He was a boy schoolmate. I went to engineering school. He finished engineering, and he was forced into the German army. Anyway, at that time, he saved my life. Of course, they started organizing the ghetto, and he took me in there, and he wanted to make sure that I have a good place to stay there for a while. Within two, three weeks, they took all the Jews in, except my father, who happened to be an officer in World War II, more medals than any other Russian soldier that you could see. Anyway, everything was fine till the city council in my hometown tried to get permission that my family should not be ghettoized, but that did not happen. So when they started rounding up the Jews, I and three other people found the basement, a wine cellar, actually, and we enclosed the wine cellar, and we stayed there for about three months. We ran out of water, had to come out, and we tried to get someplace, but we were caught, taken to Budapest. And in Budapest, when we got in, it's a longer story, but to make it short, I escaped from the train. I didn't know where I was. I somehow found my way to the Jewish ghetto, and there I found there was a resistance. And the guy's name was Rafi Friedl, who happened to be from the city where my father comes from. Anyway, I got friendly with him, and I told him my story. He didn't believe it, because it's hard to believe it that some Jews came from my hometown, but then he somehow confronted me with people from my area who knew my father, and they knew me. So he sort of encouraged me to join the underground. And then what I told him is, you know, I had this very good friend of mine, Hans-Karl, that gave me his cousin's birth certificate, baptismal certificate, and also an ID card with a picture on it. So I had all these things. My mother sewed it into my jacket. When I wound up in Budapest and I jumped, ran off, and I got in touch with the underground, they took that same ID card, removed the picture, took a picture of me and put it there. And with that, I went ahead, and I joined the German army in Buda as an auxiliary mechanic. And they gave me, well, they gave me three or four days' training, left, right, back, and they assigned me to a shop that was fixing vehicles for the German, all kinds, motorcycles, tanks even, and trucks, whatever. I worked there for about two months, but continuously was in touch with the underground. Finally, somewhere in November, when they started deporting the rest of the Jews who were left in Budapest, and I want to go into detail because it's too long, I put on my German uniform with a motorcycle, and I started going after caravans. By the way, there was no transportation, so they were deporting of groups of Jews from Budapest by foot. They first took them to Buda, on the other side of the Danube, and from there, they were marching, and by now it's already November, and for some reason or another, there's an early snowfall. And most of the people that were there were women, elderly men and elderly women, and children. And you should see that procession. It's unbelievable. I can't cry now, but I think about it. Children falling, trucks running over them, flattening and putting by the... Just unbelievable. Anyway, I went back, got on a motorcycle in German uniform, and I went with two trucks, and we chased them down. We wanted to make sure there was an army barracks on the way to Vienna from Budapest. That was about 15 kilometers outside of Budapest, so I wanted to make sure that we went past, and I came with phony papers that these are Swiss and Swedish citizens. And by the time we got through, almost the whole group. And by the way, the guards were not that unhappy either, because they were walking in the snowy rain. They were also happy to leave it, although they were pretty nasty, didn't make any difference. Anyway, we tried to save as many people as possible, and this went on until about November. End of November, I ran out of everything else. There was nowhere to go. Budapest was bombed, just like Berlin, if anybody saw it after the war. So I went into a Swiss safe house, and I spent there about six months... Oh, I'm sorry, six weeks. And one day, somebody was knocking at the door, and we had no idea who it is, and a guy is telling us to stay in there because we were liberated by the Russians, but really because the first group that came into Budapest were called strafniks. These were all the jail people, and they were terrible. They would cut legs off to get boots or fingers to get rings. So they told us, stay there till the end of the day, and we did. And we did not only the end of the day, two more days, stayed there. And then finally, we got out, and the first thing I wanted to do, go home, see if anybody survived. And it took me about four, five days to get home. I found that nobody survived, for my family. And then I went to Romania, just to get... Because Hungary was pretty well, just ended the war, but Romania already built up. So I was in Bucharest for a little while, came back, met my sister. I went to, at the time, it's called Palestine. I was there for three years, so I got caught up fighting in the war there for two years. Then I got a visa, actually, in 1945, but I had no passage to come here. So that's why I wound up in Romania, from there to Palestine. And then finally, in 1949, in December, I came to this country, and I've been living happily ever after with my wife and three children, and I did a fairly good living in the dental field here in Los Angeles, and the beginning in Jersey. But I thank you very much.
No. No. Thank you so much for sharing your story, or part of your life story, with us. Mr. Keretz, I have several members on the queue, and we'll start off with Mr. Rosendahl.
First, I might say, your remembrance will always stay with me. In 1974, I went to see Anne Frank's place in Amsterdam, and from there, I went to Germany and went through some of the insane situations there. And as a gay man, I knew that also my people were rounded up, as were other innocent people, and taken away. And we should never, ever forget. Injustice to humanity has to stop. It continues, unfortunately, in various places on the planet right now, as you've just delivered the history point to all of us. But we should always remember that we're all God's children. The white light is in every human being in the planet, and we need to find ways to see that that's protected and preserved. Thank you so much for sharing your life story with us and for your courage and your incredible testimony today. Thank you.
Mr. Englander.
Yes, Rabbi Jay, and thank you, thank you, for coming here and sharing the story. My great-grandmother, Anne Fischler, who was from Poland and Austria, came here at a very young age, and I never heard the story of how, only that she escaped. I never heard the story because I lost many in my family as well, and the few that did come would never speak of it. When I grew up as a child here in Los Angeles, not only on Holocaust Remembrance Days, but other days, we were fortunate where we had survivors that came to our synagogue and shared their story. And unfortunately, there are less survivors now than ever, and that number continues to dwindle. The story that you just shared will forever be remembered and repeated by me, and I truly appreciate it. I would also suggest, since we got it on tape, and thank you for that, that we get a copy of that video, and if it hasn't yet already been requested to submit to the Simon Wiesenthal Center here, that we do that, so we always have that remembrance that you came here to City Hall to share that story, that incredible story of survival. I took my own children recently to Israel, to the Yad Vashem, and I will say, it was probably the most memorable day we've had together in our lifetime. We spent the entire day there. In fact, they had to kick us out at the end when they were closing, and we got there early in the morning, spent the entire day. It was something that I'll never forget. And then I recently had the opportunity to go to the Anne Frank House, and I was shocked at how small the quarters were and how it was so close to the street. And you can imagine when you're there, you can imagine the army and the boots that you can hear from the streets, walking up and down those cobblestone roads, and how frightened they must have been as children and as a family in hiding because it's so close and right there in the center of everything. And so thank you for coming here today. I know we all truly appreciate it, and it was very special, and thank you for everything that you've been through to share with us as well. God bless you.
And Mr. Englander.
Basement, when you were for three, three and a half months, the apartment above us, the German military headquarters moved in. So every day, we heard the movements of the German troops because the floor was a wooden floor and with no insulation. Anyway, just thought I'll add that to it.
That's amazing. Mr. Zine... Oh, Mr. Englander.
That Mr. Rosendahl mentioned, and I think it's important to shine a light on as well, is that there is still so much hatred going on in the world. We recently had an incident in my district in Northridge just two weeks ago, where children went to another home of another child and took syrup and made swastikas and wrote Jew hater all over the house. Children who are either learning this from their own parents or have their own hatred, and this has to stop. And so we have to continue telling these stories. Thank you for bringing that up, that this does continue, and not just amongst Jews, but all. And we have to make sure that we stop the hate speech and that we teach people that we're all God's children, and we have to get along together. It's critically important, and I truly appreciate that. So thank you for bringing that up.
Yeah, Mr. Englander, those children weren't born that way. Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Mr. President. Rabbi, thank you for your words, and I was the former president of Jewish Home Executives for two years, and some Holocaust survivors still living there. And as we see them pass, those memories continue, and I'm glad that we heard the stories today because this needs to continue. The Simon Wiesenthal Center, and I've been to Israel to see the remembrance and to see it here and to see it in Israel, and it's so hard-hitting when you see it. The Armenian went through the genocide. The Jewish went through the Holocaust. And you look at the world today in the Middle East, the conflicts that are taking place, the tragedies that are taking place, you wonder when it will end. And I just have a question for the gentleman. Is that lovely lady your wife? Is that your wife? When you were talking about your girlfriend, she was not smiling.
No.
She was not smiling when you were talking about your girlfriend.
No, she was 70 years old, and I was...
I was watching her, and I was watching her, and she was not real happy with your story about your girlfriend, but you've...
I think because I wound up with a prettier one.
Oh, you got the prettier one. But obviously, you have a lovely wife with those memories, but you've been able to see the benefits of what this country offers. We want to continue that, but your story has touched many of us. We've got students in the chambers today from other parts of the world. Your stories have touched us all, so we wish you well. God keep you healthy, because the story needs to be told. Once they forget, then it drifts away, and we need to remind them always the tragedies so we can't repeat those tragedies. God bless you and your lovely family. Rabbi, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Alakon.
I too wanted to rise to thank Councilmember Keretz for giving us this story. Every once in a while, you know, we forget the stories, and so it's so nice to have a story every once in a while so that we can get our consciences right, and sometimes we need to be reminded. I too visited Israel about a dozen years ago and visited Yad Vashem. Mitch mentioned Yad Vashem, and for those that don't know, Yad Vashem is a memorial to the children who died in the Holocaust. And it's an interesting memorial where they have a few candles, and they have put reflections of those candles in such a way that it reflects 1.5 million times, memorializing the 1.5 million children who died. When we were there, I was with a delegation from the legislature. It included our mayor, who was speaker at the time, and we, you know, every different location we visited in Israel, they would give different people different tasks. Well, they selected me to present a memorial to the children who passed away. And what the delegation did not realize, and what the representatives did not realize, was the day that I presented that mural was the anniversary of my own son's death. And so I will always have... It's coming up in a week, so I'm particularly sensitive to it, but my point is that all of us will have a connection to the Holocaust, whether it be the Jewish Holocaust, the Armenian Holocaust, the Holocausts that are going on in Africa today, or even in our own neighborhoods, that we will not forget. We cannot forget because it is a constant battle. And your story today may help some people be a little more sensitive in this council chambers with their words. But day in and day out, we will never forget, and we will constantly be vigilant to root bigotry and hatred out of our midst. Thank you so much.
Mr. Krikorian.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Keretz, thank you very much for, again, bringing us this commemoration of Yom HaShoa, and especially for bringing us Dr. Greenstein and his story, which has my head still swimming. I can barely concentrate from thinking about the experiences that you've been through, sir, and your description of it, and I think your being here and sharing it with us, as much as anything, is a reminder of how recently this horrible evil took place. Because for many of us who weren't born at the time of the Holocaust, we read about it in history books, and we see it in newsreels and so on, and it's black and white, and it looks like it was a long time ago. And then you come here and remind us that in the great march of history, this was a blink of an eye ago, and it could happen tomorrow as easily as it happened yesterday. And so for that, I thank you. And, you know, I too, like a number of my colleagues, have been to Yad Vashem in Jerusalem, and that story that it tells is the story of the greatest... and that story that it tells is the story of the greatest evil that mankind has ever known and the darkest part of human nature. But Rabbi, as you've reminded us, the Holocaust also presents examples of the brightest lights of human nature as well. And the Garden of the Righteous celebrates so many of the stories of righteous Gentiles and others who acted heroically and showed us the best of human nature. But I think, you know, maybe the most horrible part of really the reflections of this, of the Holocaust and both the good and the evil that was displayed, is not so much those extremes, but the indifference, the indifference that happened at the time and the indifference that continues to act like this and the risk of acts like this even today. Everyone knows, of course, that the great quotation by Father Martin Niemuller, who said, "First, they came for the communists, and I said nothing because I wasn't a communist. Next, they came for the trade unionists, and I said nothing because I wasn't a trade unionist. Then they came for the Jews, and I said nothing because I wasn't a Jew. Then they came for me, and there was no one left to say anything for me." And it's that indifference that I think we still experience today in so many contexts. And that's what gives rise to the possibility that these acts of man's greatest inhumanity to man can continue because we do act indifferently when things happen, like what Mr. Englander described, these children. You know, when we don't respond to that, when we don't respond to this horrible plague of bullying that our young people are going through in schools throughout America because they're different and they end up dying as a result, when we stand as a society indifferent to that, we allow the Holocaust essentially to continue. And I just don't think that we, you know, should ever allow that to happen. We say never again. But if we really mean it, we need to say never again in any context, any time, under any circumstances, never again, not just to genocide, but never to hatred and never to intolerance as well. Dr. King said, "In the end, we will remember not the words of our enemies, but the silence of our friends." And I know that as a counsel, I think we're committed to never being silent. And every year, as we commemorate both Yom HaShoa and in a few days, the remembrance of the Armenian genocide, we remember those incidents, but we also remind ourselves that we have to be vigilant against hatred and intolerance in all of its forms directed at all people. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Krikorian, and colleagues for your words, and Mr. Greenstein, thank you for your story and your courage and who you are, because we celebrate two things. We commemorate tragedy, but we celebrate life. It is something we have to remind ourselves because in the depths of misery, we sometimes forget that the celebration and the contributions, your living testament of what you have become and who you are. When you think of Raul Wallenberg, who's not here, who saved Tom Lantos's life, who went on to become a congressman in this country and to contribute, when you think through what Jews in this city have done for, basically almost since the founding of this town, the first benevolent society in this city was the Hebrew Benevolent Society here in Los Angeles. My Jewish ancestors came here, my mother's side, both sides, during the pogroms when a quarter million Jews lost their lives in the Russian Empire. And then you, and to share the story of your life. We all look at this moment, and we ask ourselves, what would we have done? What courage would we have strengthened? And with tears in all of our eyes, listening to what you said today, I think we all know that those moments in time which come in a second, we are defined, and how you defined your life changed ours. And as we get to the point, I remember when we do the commemoration of the Armenian genocide, I think it was a couple of years ago, there was a man we brought in who was a small child during that genocide, a survivor. He was 100 years old. And maybe this year, or maybe next year, a couple of years from now, maybe there will be nobody left, maybe it's gone already, maybe just like that. And as we see folks who still do crazy things like deny the Holocaust or deny the truth, as we see some of the physical reminders of what is gone, I remember being in Auschwitz and talking to the museum director, and those morose collections that they have of human hair and of suitcases and all the lives that are lost and the stories, they're disintegrating. We're losing the physical memory of that. But your voice and your presence here means that we will one day have to be the storytellers to say that we were there, that we met you, that we heard you, and that we spoke. Because we can't understand a tragedy like that with statistics. We can only understand the tragedy one story at a time and ultimately the triumph, one story at a time. And thank you for your triumph and inspiring us as human beings for what our true spirit is.
Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. Your colleagues, throughout the years in this chamber, we have been witness to many accounts of human valor and human strength, and I thank you, sir, for sharing that story. You know, as an American of Mexican descent, we look at laws and we saw, and we've seen how laws can be punitive. Not long ago, we had a senator, Sevan Torres, who spoke of his struggle with this notion of humanity and how one day his father left home, and because of laws, he never came back. He disappeared. His father was gone, never to be seen again, and it's a tragedy. But he grew up to be a congressman, an agent for change, for the positive, and these are the influences that these stories have on us. And for that, I thank you, sir. I thank you, Paul, for allowing us to understand this. Six years ago, I was in Israel, and there's a display there where they had shoes, empty shoes, shoes of children, stacks and stacks and stacks. And they were essentially the shoes that were taken off, the little ones, before they got on that train. And these could have been the shoes of our brothers or sisters, like you said. So the humanity of man and inhumanity still exists today, and that is something we need to change. The hatred, the volatility of the language in some of our representatives at the federal level, and how we choose to take apart families today, to see the shoes in the deserts today, people who have died just trying to get a job, is wrong, and it's happening right now. So I thank you because you are a living symbol of what we could overcome, and I have faith, I have faith in the human spirit, and we will continue to fight and hopefully get through the ignorance and the prejudice and the lack of understanding of the fact that we are human beings. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Cardenas.
I'd like to add only one thing. It's a great privilege, me from a small town in Czechoslovakia, to appear here in front of you, this honorable counsel. I thank you very much.
Well, you have one more member that wants to speak. Mr. Cardenas.
Yes, Mr. Greenstein, I just want to thank you for who you are, and I want to thank you for sharing what you did to help others. And I'm just so happy that you're here and that you finally met the woman of your dreams, and you've been able to live the life as everybody should be able to live their life as they wish. But at the same time, I just wanted to also take the opportunity to remind people who have a story. Their story might not be exactly like yours, but it's a story that other people need to hear because your story is an inspiration to someone deciding to put their life at risk or to do something that perhaps many people may not have the courage to do, yet you had the courage to save lives. You had the courage to do something at that moment to make a difference, and literally people lived because of you. So I want to thank you for sharing that, for doing that, but sharing that. I know that I should address you as Dr. Greenstein, but with all due respect, what you did does not require a degree. I address you as Mr. Greenstein. Because you learned it, you had it within you, and you utilized it. That's something that everybody needs to know, that we all have, as it was described by one of my colleagues, that white light. You exhibited that, you used it, you knew you had it, and you used it. I just want to thank you for sharing your story and remind everybody that if you have a story that could inspire someone to be better, to do better, then do it. Open up and do it. Because far too often, the good people, the people who are as brave as you, are too quiet, and other people assume that it can't be done. And it can. Thank you.
Again, thank you, doctor and rabbi. It's been a moving, moving, moving morning. Mr. Kretz to close.
Yeah, thank you for your attention for a lengthy but important presentation. I wasn't planning on this, but I'd like to close with a little bit of a story about my own family and something I've wondered about for the last 40 years. Near the end of his life, my father went back to Germany during the Olympics in Munich. And he was a former athlete and very involved in soccer. My grandfather was president of what I believe was the largest German soccer league in the teens in Germany, and my father was the youngest professional soccer referee ever in the history of German soccer at that time. So he returned to Germany, to Munich, and there was a building that had been there for this soccer league. He returned to the site and found the building was still there. And when he entered the building, he found that the league had had some sort of a meeting recognizing one of their decade anniversaries, and that all the living players from that time all were there in a meeting, dozens of them. Obviously, none of them Jewish, these were the ones that had survived. And he went into that meeting, and at first, everybody gasped and stared because they thought they'd seen a ghost. Every one of them thought that he had died many years ago during the Holocaust, and he didn't know what to think. And after the gasp, they all cheered and went to him, carried him around the room, cheering and singing, and this was one of the great moments really in his life. And I've always wondered since then, what does that all mean? I mean, here were people who were his good friends, but they also probably all served in the German army and all killed Jews or did whatever bad things they did. And I'm still wondering about that. I mean, the wonderful, loving response that he received from his friends of many years before, you know, what does it mean that they, perhaps as Mr. Krikorian said, it wasn't that any of them hated, but they just let it happen, they just were indifferent. And I think it's just a message that we can't do that, we can't ever do that again. And if we have to put ourselves at risk, that's something we have to do. So I just wanted to share that bit of my own story, and I thank you all for the attention and respect and participation you've given in this...
Thank you, Mr. Kretz. Another round of applause. This has been a phenomenal morning. Rabbi, doctor, thank you so much. Okay, before we go to our next presentation, before I get to you, Bill, Mr. Clerk, I think we need to reconsider item 18?
Yes, sir, that is correct.
Because we have 12 members present, so let's open the roll on reconsideration, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Okay, now let's vote on the item. Let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Okay, Mr. Zion, get ready for your presentation. Mr. Rosendahl, Mr. Rosendahl for an acknowledgement.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I want to acknowledge a group that has been sitting here for the last 40 minutes and heard this incredible experience that we just heard to remember. It's the LAX Coastal Area Chamber of Commerce and their Leadership Academy session, which starts in City Hall in a couple of minutes. The group is from all over the district, and they're here to see how the city works. Could they just stand up for a quick second, Christina Davis and the entire group? We want to thank you for coming to City Hall. I hope you learned a lot about how the government works. Bless you all for being in the room. Thank you, Mr. President.
I believe we have our next presentation. It's Councilmember Zion.
We have with us today a group of students from around the world, American Field Services, Intercultural Programs, worldwide nonprofit organization dedicated to building a more just and peaceful world through international exchange, intercultural learnings. And I think the conversation that they heard just prior to this presentation shows them what occurred in this world years ago. AFS was founded as a volunteer ambulance corps during World War I, evolved into a student exchange program after the conclusion of the war. Since that time, more than 350,000 students have participated in the program around the world. Educating students internationally is an important way to share values, create goodwill, and work toward a peaceful, global society. This year, 13 AFS students are living in the greater Los Angeles area, visiting from countries around the globe, Italy, Kuwait, Morocco, Syria, Thailand, Tunisia, and Brazil. While the young visitors studying in the United States for a year, semester or summer, everyday tasks such as eating meals, going to movies, playing sports, visiting historic and cultural landmarks like City Hall will leave a lasting impression. By hosting a high school student from another country, local families bring the world right to their doorstep and into their home. Opportunity for an American family to experience life through a new set of eyes represent a diversity of the world as they share their family and community life and build lifelong bonds with these students. The future will be shaped by next generation's ability to function in an increasingly complex global society, and these students play an important role in advancing respect and understanding for that future. And the coordinator of the program, the Activities Director, Karen Cross, you can come on in here, Karen Cross, you don't have to hide over there, to bring these students up, and I'm going to mention that we have high schools that they're currently attending from Redondo Union, Santa Monica, Miracosta, Polytech, Culver City, Vista Mar, Glendale, John Marshall, and Miracosta University High, and also Santa Monica. So if you could say a few words, and then we will have the students introduce themselves because they will be able to get on camera, say their name and a little experience in this great city of the angels. Karen.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. It is such an honor to be here. It is so exciting to be involved in this program called AFS because we are building peace by building cultural understanding through bringing high school students into homes, and some of the people involved here have had AFS students in their homes and in their lives, like Mr. Garcetti. And we want to thank you and invite anyone else who is interested in bringing a little bit of the world into their homes to contact afs.org. Also, we send high school students abroad all over the world for amazing experience. So I'd like to bring our students forward one at a time so they can say their names, their home country, and their high school.
Take it away.
Christina Alferova, I'm from Russia, and I go to Culver City High School. And I had a great experience during my exchange program year, exchange, yeah, during this year. And I also attended Yeston Government Program, so I had a lot of fun, and I can understand something that's going on here. Thank you.
Why don't we just have them come over here, and then we'll go take pictures in the back?
So my name is Ricardo Campagna, and I'm from Italy, and here I attend Santa Monica High School.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for inviting us. My name is Omar, and I'm from Morocco, and I'm going to Culver City High School. I want to thank the Yest program for giving us this great opportunity. It's like a dream come true for us. Thank you so much.
My name is Francesco Gotti. I'm from Italy, I go to Redondo... I'm from Italy and go to Redondo Union High School. I'm proud to be here and want to thank this city and this country for hosting me this year. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Simone and I am from Denmark. I go to an art school in downtown Los Angeles called Raymond C. Cortinas High School.
Hi, my name is Joan Bortolotto. I'm from Brazil and I'm attending Miracosta High School.
Hi, my name is Omar Kutan. I'm from Syria. It has been a grateful just being here in the U.S., experiencing the American culture. I want to thank the Department of State for offering this scholarship and thank you so much again.
Hi, I'm Kataliya Gahan. I come from Thailand and I go to Redondo Union High School.
Don't be shy. We're all going to get to come up.
Good morning. My name is Maya and I'm come from Tunisia and I go to Vista Mar High School in El Segundo. Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Roberto Zai. I'm Roberto Zai and I come from Italy and I go to Miracosta. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Papapon Ponlongno. I'm from Thailand. I'm go to John Marshall High School. I have a great time over here. Thank you.
You know who else went to John Marshall High School? We all know who went to John Marshall High School. Tom LeBonds, who's not here, but he went to John Marshall High School. He'd be happy to know you're at that school.
I am Batul Hamad from Kuwait and I am with our YES Student Scholarship. And I would really love to thank, you know, the U.S. State Department for this because it really is giving us the experience to, you know, experience America is a whole different, you know, just experience. It's really nice. Thank you.
Chaperones? So I think what the students learned from this visit to City Hall and hearing the conversation before and the tragedy of the Holocaust that occurred, to take back to your countries because we have basically the world represented. We know there's conflict currently in Syria. We know the Middle East has had many problems. I'm Lebanese, born here, but Lebanese, so I understand the culture. And with my colleague, Eric Garcetti, we've traveled to Beirut, Lebanon, to establish sister city. So hopefully, through the education you're learning, you can help establish peace because our goal is to have peace, not only in Los Angeles, but peace throughout the world. That is our goal. And your adventure over here, this experience, hopefully will help foster that in your native country. So we welcome you to Los Angeles City Hall. Mr. President, Mr. President, I thank you for the opportunity.
And I was just reminded, Councilman Zion, that the parents of these young people can view on the internet today's presentation on the site here from Los Angeles.
This is going out live now on television, but it is on the internet, lacity.org. You can pull this up. You can see it and keep it forever and send it back to your parents in your hometown.
You can prove you were here.
Yeah, prove you were here. All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, colleagues.
Thank you very much. Yeah, Councilman Garcetti?
Just very quick, I just want to say the AFS students, I'm an AFS family, as was mentioned. My sister went on two AFS exchanges, one to Thailand, one to New Zealand. And we had a Swiss student who is a brother still to me, to this day, 25 years later. And he comes every single year. So Los Angeles may feel like home today, but know that for years to come, this will always be your home and the families that you have will stay here. Your mothers, your fathers, your brothers, your sisters for a long, long time to come. Congratulations.
Thank you, Councilman Zion. Okay, I believe that covers all of the presentations. Let's now transition to the public comment period. First up is John Walsh, then Stephen Phipps, and Bobby Catano. Please come on up to the microphone if you please.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org since March 18th, 188,000 successful server requests. It's so nice to know that there are still a few foreign students who haven't been shot or beaten up or robbed, as three more USC students were robbed yesterday. As far as the Holocaust is concerned, no, I have only distant cousins who were victims of the Holocaust. Plus, my great-grandfather, Leo Berger, left Budapest and he said, "There's going to be a Holocaust. We are all going to be killed." And he got his Jewish ass to New York City. And those who didn't listen to him and said, "Leo, we have a good time here. Everything's fine for us," they died. I'm sorry they died. But I'm so happy that my father lived. And the only thing that he had to pay for was that his daughter married a Christian. And if he had stayed in Budapest, I wouldn't be here and none of our family would be here. Yes, what am I saying? My great-grandfather was a conspiracy theorist and a gadfly. HollywoodHighlands.org, come to our website, find out about the Missing Children Report. We put it up there, Missing City Hall Children Report. You'll see it up there. You'll find it nowhere else. As far as the Ying Ming murders are concerned, $75,000, I read Parks is putting up $75,000 to the city. You listen to me for Ying Ming murder information. It's not up yet. And I'm telling you, as Parks said last Friday, the LAPD said, "Don't put up to you, City Council. Don't put up a reward." Now you're putting up $75,000. We asked the mayor of San Francisco, the most important Chinese-American politician, to have, we want a $1 million reward from the city of San Francisco. HollywoodHighlands.org for the truth.
Stephen Phipps.
Hello, my name is Stephen Phipps. I'm a fifth-generation Angelino. And over the decades, I've seen this once great city deteriorate. And I'm just pretty disgusted at how it's turned out. And I personally think it's because of the power-hungry politicians who've done nothing to address the major problems of the city. And it's pretty much driven business right out of town with all the rules and regulations. My answer is that all these politicians should have one term. And with all due respect, after that, I think everybody should be fired. Thank you.
Bobby Catano. Arnold Sacks.
I think it's good that the gross receipt tax was phased out or will be, but it's not enough. And the more cuts, the more jobs and business development. And if the city really was interested in jobs and business development, they would eliminate all the anti-business rules and regulations. And you guys are mainly career politicians and most of you guys probably don't have businesses, so you wouldn't be qualified to know what that is. So you would have to employ some of us in the private sector to tell you what is, what is not anti-business. But, you know, there's so much rules and regulations, it's had the opposite effect. And all these businesses are leaving the city. And your policies are reversing investment. And when there's no investment, it doesn't create jobs, it doesn't create business development. When taxes are lower, it drives and stimulates business investment. When taxes are higher, they reverse it. Private sector business investment is the engine of the economy. It's the foundation. We create the jobs, we give the employees the purchasing power to buy a house, the tenants to rent an apartment. And, you know, and if you review history, the fact is every time the government increases participation in our lives and imposes taxes and regulations, the economy always goes in decline. I don't know why so many people don't get that, but taxes simply stop. They prevent investment and they stop economic activity. And there's less tax receipts in the city. Even if taxes are increased, the net effect is less income for the city.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Sacks, followed by Monica, I can't make out the last name, but with the Fair Housing Coalition. And then we'll move to the Valley for Rick Nightingale. Mr. Sacks.
Yes, thank you. Good morning, Arnold Sacks. Yes, quite a presentation honoring the survivors of the Holocaust. But in fact, the Holocaust in and of itself was the end of a process, a process that was begun through propaganda, through the ability of people to get, become empowered with authority, where they create their own departments, their own rules, their own regulations. And because they have the authority, it's their way and nobody else has a voice in that operation. So when the city council changes the rules for the meetings, like they did for redistricting, and nobody stands up and says, "Hey, wait, that's not right." That's a step in the process. And when the city attorney steps up and says, "Hey, wait, we can leave a special meeting because we can leave a special meeting." And nobody steps up and says, "Hey, wait, that never happened before." That's part of the process. And when the public wants to speak on an agenda item, but it's already been held in committee, oh, wait, that's part of the process. We don't want to break that rule. And when you have employees that are willing to lie to create an agenda, oh, wait, nobody steps up and says, "Hey, wait, those items weren't heard in committee, Mr. President. They should be heard in council because there was no public comment." That's the start of the process that leads you down to the situation where there's hatred and there's violent acts because nobody steps up and says, "Hey, wait, how can you be on an agency that doesn't exist? You're supposed to, you're supposed to take an oath to follow the state office laws, but hey, wait, time's up."
Thank you. Again, Monica from the Fair Housing Coalition, followed by Rick Nightingale in the Valley. Good morning.
Good morning. I was very touched by the Holocaust story, very. It brought tears to my eyes. But what we have here in Los Angeles is a semi-Holocaust going on. We have strict liability, which means if you're a landlord and you care and you're a person, just like a Jew, against the Germans, but you really care and you want to be a good landlord, we have a law right now which is called strict liability. That means guilty with no right to be proven innocent. And you've heard me several times, I'm the owner of the Waldorf or the trustee of the Waldorf. I had a snap in my beam. Of course I care about people. I wouldn't be a landlord if I didn't care about people. I'd be a manufacturer making widgets. I care about human beings. I have been stressed to the max for three years because I have human being live load in a building that my attorney, George Eschew, has had to reach out to Anna Eschew to sit there and make sure it's red-tagged so we can sit there and do the construction correctly. We have two forces. We have housing and we have building. And as we will know, their motives are completely different. It then puts a landlord in a vortex. I am a victim of that vortex. I was stripped, I was shackled, I was prosecuted for the criminal act of strict liability, went to jail for two days, to a horror story. Holocaust, I got news for you. You guys should look at what goes on in county. I am still here fighting for our rights because we wouldn't be landlords if we didn't care. So I'm, as a wholly complete council, I think, please wake up. There are, I think maybe some of it is just due to innocence, really not knowing that rape is going on with rape, you know?
Thank you, thank you. Mr. Nightingale in the Valley.
Yeah, Rick Nightingale. I'll tell you, Arnold Sacks, he put a right on the nail on the head regarding everything's going on around here. That's the same thing yesterday on this budget deal. The only two things that people said that they all agreed on is that our trash tax you put in, and now when if you sell a house and so forth, they're going to double or triple or quadruple the price when you sell a house. The only one of you people up there that said anything was Zion, Mr. Zion. Nobody else said a damn word about nothing. What do you people do? And you wonder why things are the way they are. I've been coming to this meeting and cutbacks. I'm sorry. I was in the electoral unit, I got laid off different times. I had to go, then I waited for another job. You people haven't laid off anybody. It's the only place that you can save money is that. I hate to say it, but it is. Because you won't cut back on any of the projects that you people have. I'm telling you people, you better get out and vote. I don't care if it's Republican, Democrat, or whatever, but if these people can't state what they're for and so forth, and I hate to go right back, it's basically the Democrats that want to give everything away, that you better get them out because you are on a sinking ship and it's going down. Say it was Obama, he don't have anything good that he has done since he's been in office, except now it's going to be bashing. Now he's on the women thing and what else is he going to do? Because he can't talk about anything else. Same thing as you people. What can you say that you have done for this city except go bankrupt? I'm telling you people, you better get out and vote because if you don't, you people are in a world of hurt. Same as like if you vote for Obama, you're in a world of hurt. I'm sorry. Thank you.
Okay, now, Mr., I'm going to call three names. I'd like to see the people behind one another. So I'm calling David Cheney, a Ruby, and a Wayne Spindler. Please come forward. I'm looking for Ruby and Wayne Spindler. Yes, sir.
Okay. Hi, I'm David Cheney. I'm property owner here in Los Angeles. Well, what's left of my property. I do want to say this morning I was at the Housing Committee meeting and I see that Councilmember Alarcon is gone. But Councilmember Reyes, I was very glad to see that you guys are starting to get an understanding. And you know what? Especially the foreclosure line. I have a building in your district at Bellevue in North Boylston. Two years I paid on time to Chase, nothing but trouble from, you know, from, I mean, I went through hell with the HPOZ. They wouldn't let me put in double-pane windows. I was putting all French windows in, lot, a lot of. The Chase Bank took that over. They've done it twice. I beat them in bankruptcy court. They're back again. They're trying to take it back. If you drive by that building now, see, I used to go there every two days and clean it up. It is filthy. There is a Christmas tree blocking the sidewalk, which your street services have been kind enough to notify me of, that has been there since, well, it must be Christmas. So you guys, if you guys aren't careful and you keep, and I have a stack, as I was mentioning this morning, I have a stack of bills at home, the fire department, the $26, now $48 for fire inspection, the continual, I was late because I had to pay off all my bankruptcies, so I was late on my housing fees. They've now tripled. They've gone from, what is it, $50 to $150 a unit. So now it's, we're well over $3,000. You know what? You people are going to drive people like me. I sit on the board over in the Rampart Police Department. I got rid of the gangs in Angelino Heights. You people, I'm holding you responsible. You are driving us out of business and you are not going to like what you're getting. Because the bank is not a great landlord, the investors are not great landlords. I lost my place in Silverlake in Garcetti's district. The guy came by and cut down an 80-year-old ash tree so he could park his car in the front yard. Now, you guys, I lived there for 14 years. I can tell you, I had a beautiful garden there. I would have never cut that beautiful tree down to park a car in the front yard and bring that neighborhood down. And furthermore, every time you guys drive someone like me out of business, you bring your property values down and your tax base is eroding.
Thank you. Ruby?
Hi, I'm Ruby and I'm also a landlord. I have a complaint about the housing department. I think that they're just trying to make money out of the owners. I got charged $12,000 penalties, an inspection fee, which was for a palm tree leaf that fell on my yard. They charged me four, five times, plus the penalty, plus the RSO fees. I've been trying to get ahold of the home LHD. Also, I think that the landlords have no rights anymore. I think the tenants are abusing the rights and the landlords are running out of business. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Spindler.
Yes, for an excellent dissertation on the survivors of the Holocaust, you should see Larry David's Curb Your Enthusiasm episode called Survivors. Very touching. Anyway, we have a human-ass clown named Ryan Velenkort in the downtown news. Anyway, we have a human-ass clown named Ryan Velenkort in the downtown news, and this lunatic, this maniac writes down, "If you would like to tap renewable energy sources and help reduce consumption of ozone-burning, coal-generating power, and you're willing to pay 3% premium on your bill, call the Los Angeles Department of Water and Power and let them know. The money goes towards the agency's purchase of energy from wind and solar farms and other renewable sources." Well, if you believe that, then you believe the Holocaust didn't exist, because it's about the same kind of logic. Who the hell is going to call the DWP? Let's see, how's that going to go? Hello? Do, 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 do. You know, you're to put on the music for about two hours. Now you get a live operator, yes, hello. Yeah, I'd like to raise my utility bill 3%. Oh, you would? Okay, sure. How, how much? 3%? Oh, how about an extra trash can? We can give you an extra trash can, because if they, if you take more than one trash can, they'll double, they'll double your, your trash fees. Because see, a lot of wealthy Jews that live in Council District Five, they need more than one trash can, and they have to pay $74 more because you can't fit the stuff in the trash can you get now. And that's the way they steal the money. That's the way they do it. So stop stealing from the homeowners.
Thank you, thank you. Henry Marine, followed by Arminik Norijanian. And that will be our last public, general public comment card. Mr. Marine?
All right, this here is Chapter 108 of the Hack La Rues, dated June 21st, 1985. This is where you started your MOUs. The logic, the hire-perde employees, and give them the prevailing wage rate, but don't give them the prevailing wage rate, take the money from it and shelter it away somewhere else. All right, this is defined, temporary positions. Positions established for an anticipated period of less than six months shall be deemed temporary and shall be paid as follows. Perdeem positions. Temporary positions established for an anticipated period of less than 60 workdays shall be paid at an hourly rate as follows. Now you know, 60 workdays is 12 weeks, which is seven days in a week is 284 calendar days, which is less than 90 days. Planted perdeem employees and plans shall be paid in accordance with duly established wage rates, including health, welfare, vacation, and other fringe benefits, contributions to the appropriate fund for the craft or service involved as provided under the memorandum of understanding. Now, this is based on, six months equals 1,000 hours of service. Their equivalencies, under state law and tax code, anybody employed over six months has to be provided participation in a pension, in a pension plan. Now, under suppression of, of the laws, yeah, shit, suppression, if any of the provisions of this Chapter 108 are in conflict with the memorandum of understanding adopted by the commission, the memorandum of understanding shall prevail. That means we ignore the laws. That's where you're at right now. You're, you're denying permanent positions, you're denying the prevailing wage rate, and you're denying...
Thank you, Mr. Marine. Arminik Norijanian, please come forward.
Responsible city council members, good morning. Good morning, fellow Angelinos. My name is Arminik Norijanian, I'm a liberal Democrat and human rights advocate. I'm probably more liberal than President Obama himself. Actually, I promised to cut, I run, actually, I run for the seat of California State Assembly for this year, yeah, for June 6th presidential primaries elections, and I ask almost 80,000 black and Hispanic voters to vote for me as the most liberal and progressive Democrat. I promised to declare amnesty for applicants for DMV, which were, due to which we wouldn't be able, we wouldn't be required to disclose their immigration status. And the immigration status is not the business of state DMVs, it's federal government's business to regulate immigration policy. And I also promised to cut taxes for small businesses, retail, small businesses throughout California, and 40%, in order to, and actually, I also promised to raise taxes against wealthy individuals, wealthy homeowners, and rich oil producer manufacturers against industrial corporations, 50%, in order to remedy the budget deficit in California, and create more jobs, government jobs, government contracted jobs, and I promise to create more government contracted jobs by increasing taxes against wealthy corporations, 50%. Nowadays, where Governor, California Governor Edmond Brown proposes only 3% increase in taxes, and quarter, cent percent increase in sales taxes, which is ridiculous and ludicrous. Also, yeah, I propose also to establish six-month free pregnancy leaves for California women, and I propose to comprehensive ban against, against so-called medical marijuana dispensaries, which is wolf and sheepskin. I demand canceling illegal city ordinance 18150, which legalized the sales of harmful narcotic marijuana.
Thank you, thank you very much. Okay, that ends general public comment. Mr. Clerk, we have a very experienced city commissioner that's been waiting. If we could go to Item 16?
Very good, sir, that's Item 16, called Special for Cards.
Okay, Gregory. Zion, you're slowing down proceedings, you won't let me get our commission nominee to come forward. Come sit down. And I have two cards on that, on, on this item. One would be Mr. Walsh, and after Mr. Walsh, Wayne Spindler.
John Walsh blogging at Hollywood Highlands, H-I-G-H-L-A-N-D-S dot org, 550,000 successful server requests since, in the past six months, three weeks. Notice what happened here. They didn't, we pulled it off. In other words, Mr. Lipp thought he'd come here, wouldn't have to stay, and they would approve it on the consent calendar. They weren't even going to ask him any questions, it was going to be automatic. Now let me tell you about Mr. Lipp. I'm sorry, Mr. Lipp, but I took your job away from you, myself and several others. I worked for 40 years, four zero years against the CRA. I said in 1971 at the Ocean View Project in Berkeley, someday this agency will be destroyed, and I said it to the black homeowner whose house was being taken at that time, and it was. Now they have, this man up here, Mr. Lipp, a huge contributions to certain politicians, he's, he is a money raiser for you, and now that he doesn't have a job, because he used to be at the CRA, you're giving him this real booby prize consolation prize, fire pension. It's nothing, but Mr. Lipp wants to have some, some sort of job so that he can raise money for the mayor and also for several people who are running for mayor. So now, you are going to give him a job. You're not even going to ask him any questions, because you're only interested when the camera is on concerning the Holocaust. Go to the anti-Nazi rally, none of you showed up there in 2010. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Mr. Spindler?
Anyway, resides in, Gregory Lippi resides in Council District Three, so that's Dennis Zine's people. And that's good for Dennis Zine running for Controller, to have a member of the, one of the most powerful of all commissions, a police and fire pension, billions of dollars of money, billions and billions of dollars. But the problem is going to be, is when the city is placed in a bankruptcy proceeding, will those pensions be paid in full, or will they have to be reduced in a settlement? Because according to Miguel Santana, which, there is no community impact statement that's been submitted on this appointment, and a man that's going to be handling a couple of billion dollars of money, background checks have to be done. Oops, they're pending. And then, today, I think we're in April, today, April 18th, and this appointment is going to go all the way to June 30th, 2012. A long, long time. And it's already been approved and confirmed. So the question is, is why is this even here? Shouldn't this just be unanimous consent? I mean, why are we having public discussion about it? It's already been voted and approved. There's not going to be any background checks, because we don't need to do that for people that are overseeing millions and billions of dollars of money. You can take anybody and put them on any commission. Because the same thing is going to happen, is that in June 30th, 2012, who's going to be sitting in that chair next? Vote, no. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Zine?
Well, thank you. Mr. President, I personally know Mr. Greg Lippi and his career in the city of Los Angeles, your previous employment. Can you explain how that qualifies you for this? And you had nothing to do with the CRA being dissolved, but the different commissions and activities and leadership roles you held in the city of LA?
Sure.
And employment?
Well, let's see. How am I qualified for this? It seems to me that the main role, one of the main roles for the pension fund is the protection of the assets and to enhance the performance of those assets. As a CPA for 42 years...
Say that again?
As a CPA for 42 years.
Okay.
I have done quite a bit of that kind of work. I've been a problem solver, troubleshooter, and solved quite a bit of problems and safeguarded an awful lot of assets. So I think that, from that standpoint, I'm qualified. As you said, I've served the city of Los Angeles, both practically in every way I can think of, but first through my involvement with VICA, secondly, on the CRA, been involved in many different ventures with regard to promoting the city, and I take it very seriously.
And I know from your reputation, you get things done, and obviously, the police and fire pension system, the laser system, the water and power pension system, those are critical, we need to maintain proper review, proper security...
Correct.
...to make sure that, that they can continue to function as they're supposed to. But I know of your reputation, your leadership, you were president of VICA, as I remember in the past, a lovely wife who's here, experiencing this situation, this confirmation for this position as a commissioner. But it's a very important, powerful commission, but it does generate dollars and investments and oversight, and with your stellar reputation, you're absolutely, totally, completely qualified for that. So the, the appointment obviously is in order, and when you were with the CRA, you were there for a short period of time, how long was that position?
Unfortunately, it was only for a year, and obviously, you know what happened to it.
Yeah.
But I had looked forward, you know, to being there quite a bit longer so that we could create many more jobs for the city and provide much more affordable housing.
Right. So I highly recommend for approval and well-qualified for this position, I wish you well with it.
Thank you.
Mr. Englander?
Mr. Lippi, I too have known you for many, many years, but I find it challenging and rare and unique that we actually appoint somebody with an accounting and investment background to deal with something having to do with accounting and investment. And with your background in pension expertise and analysis is refreshing, particularly needed nowadays. In fact, I remember years ago having a conversation with my predecessor, with Greg Smith, about the idea of having prerequisites for folks who we would appoint to commissions, where we actually have experts in knowledge areas with history, experience, training, education, professional expertise, and so it's refreshing to see that you would bring those to the table here. What do you think some of the biggest challenges we face with pension investments are today, and how do you hope to overcome those?
Well, some of the biggest challenges today are, you know, investing in something that's going to be secure and be able to pay these pensions in the future. You know, the economy is in such a tailspin, and the various companies are, you know, in that situation as well. I think that, you know, risk is something that we can't really afford too much of. And, you know, many times investors, investment people say, you know, without some risk, you can't, you know, make any money. But these are funds that are extremely important, they represent the full efforts of many people's lives over the years, and that needs to be there for them when they get there. So the investments that, you know, are entered into should not be entered into lightly. And I know that some of the investment classes that they are in, you know, do bear some risk. Now, that doesn't mean that they shouldn't be in them. As a matter of fact, the percentages are pretty small as far as hedge funds and commodities and so on. But, you know, those are the ones that, when they go up, they go up great, but when they don't, you have a big problem. So I think just proper oversight, gathering of all the facts before investments are entered into, I think that's what needs to be done.
Well, I appreciate hearing that, and, and I know you'll, you'll be a great addition. And just one last thing, I don't know if you realize what you're giving up, but it was stated earlier by one of the public speakers, that you're being appointed for political purposes and the ability to raise money.
Right.
And I just want to let you know that under the law, you're giving up the ability to actually host any more fundraisers.
You're absolutely right.
You're done. You can't solicit funds anymore, you are going to be less political now than ever. And, and so you'll be putting those efforts instead into making sure that you're a watchdog for the pensions, and, and I appreciate your sacrifice.
Right, thank you. I actually sacrificed that for the CRA, too.
That's right, yes, thank you.
Mr. Alacon?
I too rise to, to say that I've known Greg for a long, long time. He has been a longstanding advocate in the San Fernando Valley, representing primarily the business community, but he's not one of those knee-jerk business advocates. He's, he's not one to, to criticize, you know, expenditures for social, social improvements, for example. He is one who is very considerate, very caring, and certainly very passionate about his goals to stimulate business and create jobs. And I've always had a tremendous admiration and respect for him, and know that he's a successful businessman. You still drive a Prius, by the way?
Actually, I'm still driving a hybrid, but it's not a Prius now.
Okay, yeah. I, I tell you, I had so much respect for him when he was president of, of the Valley Industry and Commerce Association. He was one of the first owners of the Prius, I think, in the San Fernando Valley, and it speaks to his integrity, I think, that he is somebody who, who wants to see us move forward and, and create new kinds of economies, if anything, that, that certainly present greater opportunities for us to improve our social condition at the same time. So I am very happy to stand up and say that this is a good appointment from the investment point of view, based on his experience, although I would like him to focus on local investments...
Absolutely.
...using that money for, to create local jobs and local entrepreneurism and business stimulation that can result, recycle in our economy several times. Right, guys? Right, guys? And I get kind of a soft nod over there, but it's clearly a challenge to do that in the context of your fiduciary responsibility to generate as much profitability as possible. So with that challenge, I think you're up to the task, and I salute you and thank you for volunteering your time for the city of Los Angeles.
Thank you.
He is a good man. Mr. Rosendorf.
Yeah, a couple of quick questions. Maybe our city guy has the answers, maybe you don't. How much money do we have in that fund right now? I'm told billions.
It's approximately 14 billion, including the health subsidy plan.
14 what?
14 billion.
Okay. And the upturn, downturn, the this turn, the other turn, the recession, the great recession, whatever it all is, what do you see as our rate of return going forward?
That's kind of difficult to answer as far as what I see as rate of return, because, as you know, it's been so volatile.
I know.
The idea is to maximize return. I know that the plan is to average, if possible, 5% real return, which would be taking out the inflation from there. And I think, basically, if that can be maintained, a 5% real return, which obviously means the return has to be higher to cover for the inflation piece, then I think that will be satisfactory.
The smoothing concept that we do, explain what that means and the real reality of that right now.
When there are investment gains and investment losses, instead of taking them immediately in the year, they're put into a category that's called other comprehensive income, and they're amortized in over a period of time, so that you have a more stable recognition as opposed to some of the tremendous ups and downs that occur.
Yeah. I don't want a fake rosy picture, is one of the things I'm trying to say.
No, no, no.
You know, I want the reality of the moment, because it is important for everybody's notion of this.
Well, I agree with you, and, you know, all I can say is that, you know, I and I'm sure the other commissioners will do our best to make sure that that's maximized.
Right.
Like I say, if we can keep the plan that was originally in state, you know, in place to yield that 5%, I think that would be great.
Okay. The last thing is, I don't want any mirrors and smoke coming out of anywhere at this point in time.
Absolutely.
We're in a very tough situation. There are no shortcuts. We've got to be straight to ourselves and to the taxpayer public as well. So I look forward to that kind of integrity from your work.
Thank you very much.
And thank you for coming on board for this at the most challenging of times.
Happy to do it. Thank you.
Okay, no more members in the crew? I mean, on the crew. No more members in this crew, no more members on the queue. Let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 eyes.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Mr. Clerk, I want to ask that we take item 20 out of water, was held special by So as item 20 is now before us, I have a card from Mr. Arnold Sacks. Mr. Sacks is not here. Can we open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote?
12 eyes.
That brings us to, I don't see Mr. Zine.
Item 9.
Mr. Zine, are you prepared to take up item 9 at this time?
That would be item 9, called special for Councilmember Zine.
Thank you very much, Mr. Clerk. And, Mr. President, this item deals with the cellphones, and we asked the CAO to report back to get a full survey of all cellphones, and we'd like to know where that survey is, and what are we doing to reduce cellphone usage throughout the city of Los Angeles. So if someone can come forward to explain that. I did receive a report back from Department of Water and Power. They have cut their bill 37.2%, and they've reduced the number of cellphones significantly. I have the numbers. So Department of Water and Power got the message, made a major reduction in the cost, major reduction in the use of cellphones, but the question is from the CAO. And come on forward, don't be shy. The issue came up regarding the use of cellphones, the expense, the numbers, et cetera, and we're trying to find out where we are in that. If you can just bring us up to date.
Yes, certainly. I'm Laura Ito, and I'm actually with Information Technology Agency. So the report before you is a report by ITA. I think in our report where we reported DWP hadn't responded, it's because there were these two efforts going on to look at cellphones. The one led by ITA and General Services was to work with the departments on their cellphone expenses and make recommendations for the appropriate plans that would minimize the cost to the city. The effort by the CAO was to look at the number of devices held by departments, and I'm not able to speak to that. Our effort with the ITA and GSD effort did yield approximately $34,000 a month in savings for departments following the recommended plans, which are zero monthly cost plans and just a flat rate per minute.
So that was a savings. But what departments did not cooperate in this or participate?
We can certainly provide you the list of those departments that didn't respond.
How many did not? How many departments did not respond to this request?
We reached out to...
Just the number-wise.
42 departments, and we have on this list about 27 that have responded to our recommendations.
So there's 42 that did not respond?
No, 42 in total that we were instructed to reach out to.
And 27 responded out of 42?
No.
And those other departments, what is the reason for them not acknowledging or responding?
Well, actually, some departments responded and said that for the savings that we were able to recommend, or the plan switches we were able to recommend, were so nominal that it wasn't worth switching out plans and switching devices that they might have to do in order to achieve those savings. Other departments had security concerns, because our process was to ask for access to all of their phone bills. And so some departments were concerned about giving us that view because of security.
I have a question and a concern about that. If it's the issue that they need to block out certain numbers, how do we know numbers aren't being called to places that are inappropriate? I mean, the question is, we've got to have some oversight, and if we don't have any oversight, we know that the problems have continued, and the bills keep coming in, taxpayers are paying for it. So what I'd like to do, Mr. President, is we continue this item from last week. I'd like to continue it until we can get those answers, and we can have the CLA come back, and we can have ITA direct those other departments to respond. If not, we'll call those departments in here to respond. I mean, the bottom line is, we're talking thousands of dollars that's being expended. What's the annual bill, citywide, in phone bills?
We really don't know, because ITA does not pay those phone bills. We can certainly report back on the annual expense.
Well, I'm sure it's hundreds of thousands of dollars.
Yes.
And that's the problem. And many, millions of dollars. And many of us, and I pay my own phone bill, my cellphone, I pay it myself, and many of the city employees do that. But the question is, if the taxpayers are paying for that phone bill... Pardon me? No, I gave it to my deputy. He answered it. He took the phone call. So anyway, let's continue this for 30 days.
Okay, we have a couple of individuals on the queue, and I would need for you to get the exact date to the clerk, as to you want to continue it till...
Okay, well, we want to get the answers. We don't want to just leave it up in the air, and if...
Okay, Mr. Krikorian.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. Just very briefly, I think, obviously, it makes very good sense for us to always be reconsidering our contractual relationships and so on, and ways to reduce costs. If part of the direction that we're going to give is to reduce the number of cellphones in use, I think part of the analysis also must include, though, whether there's a reduction in efficiency that comes with that. So it's not enough simply to say fewer cellphones equals savings. I don't think that's necessarily the case. So when we do bring this back and when we consider it further, I'd like to have that part of the analysis included as well, because there are some departments that would be made horribly inefficient if they didn't have access to mobile communications.
Certainly, we very much appreciate that approach, because really, the approach that we've been taking on the Cellphone Policy Review Committee with GSD is to reduce the cost, not necessarily the number of devices. And reducing the cost by choosing the correct plans.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Cardenas.
Yes, I want to thank you for all the work that you've done so far. We have made tremendous progress. But you're absolutely right, Councilmember Krikorian, because the main emphasis has been on reducing cost per phone. It doesn't mean that the department should not continue to evaluate whether or not they need as many phones as they have. But also, to your point, Councilmember Zine, with a motion, we can direct departments to report and to give up information. Unfortunately, IT doesn't have the authority to tell departments what to do or what not to do. Isn't that correct? It's a cooperative relationship, and many departments have been very cooperative. I just want to give them credit. But at the same time, if a department is not cooperative directly with IT, they don't have authority over that department to demand. So the bottom line is, if, I think what might work, because we probably don't have a time certain to bring it back to council, maybe we can send this back to the policy committee. And in the meantime, if you'd like to write an additional motion to go ahead and have the concurrent hearing in the policy committee, another motion letting the departments know, thank you for all that you've done, those of you who have responded, those of you who have not responded with this information to IT, you have to, you need to respond, and we need to give them an opportunity and a date to do that. Because IT cannot demand. We can force the issue and require them to give up that information, but IT cannot demand of the department. Thank you.
Mr. Alakon.
Has anybody done an analysis of just requiring employees to bring their own cellphones?
We have looked at providing stipends, but there are employee relations issues...
No, no, I didn't say stipends.
No, we have not looked at just...
Just requiring them to use their own cellphones. I mean, with, most people have plans that allow them unlimited use, and it's cheap by comparison. It's relatively cheap. So why hasn't anybody ever looked at just requiring employees to bring their own phones to work, and all we pay for are the office phones?
The one issue we found with that is if there are Public Records Act requests, it's difficult to separate personal usage from any state usage.
Exactly my point. Why, I'm sorry, so, public records requests, so you're saying that if...
If somebody was requesting information about their city, regarding their city usage, their personal usage would be exposed as well?
Even on their personal phone?
On their personal phone.
It would require them to use the work.
We would have to have waivers from employees allowing us to seek out that information on their personal devices.
For phone use?
Correct, yeah. We have Public Records Act requests for phone records.
Is that a public record?
Mm-hmm.
If somebody uses their personal phone for work, that's a public record?
Mm-hmm.
And that has been tested in the court?
I couldn't tell you that.
I'd sure like to see research on that, because I don't see how somebody using their personal phone, even if it's work-related, yeah, do you have some information?
I know in the email that there was a case in Texas that people were using their personal email for work stuff as a way of trying not to be in public record, and the court held that because you're using it for work, that your personal email could be a public record obtained. I don't know for phone, but I know for email it happened.
That's for email?
Yeah.
But just...
And it's Texas. And it's Texas.
And it's Texas, okay. Well, I don't know. I just think we need to dig deeper and look at the various options. Maybe some employees could use their personal phones for some things, but I don't know. I just think that some jurisdictions are requiring employees to use their phones, right?
Not that I'm aware of.
I thought Governor Brown required it.
So did you get...
No, but he requires them to have cellphones, so, I believe, I'm not sure. But I think it should be explored for the...
Mr. Zine.
Well, the, I'm sure if we looked at the total cost to the taxpayers, it's millions of dollars in the instruments and the use of the phones. And when we looked at this originally, we found that people who were assigned to office duties had cellphones. It doesn't seem that they need a cellphone if they're in an office. If they're out in the field, I can see that. So what we're trying to do is reduce the numbers. Again, I want to commend the Department of Water and Power. They made a significant reduction in the costs, a given reduction in the number of phones, that, the instruments that are utilized by them. So maybe if we instruct the CAO, the CLA to work with you, ITA, and all departments to analyze, review, reduction of cellphones, and to report back in 30 days, maybe that would work. And those departments that don't want to acknowledge, within that 30-day period, if you could let my office know, and we will then deal with it at that level. But we need to come to a conclusion, because this has been dragging for a long period of time, and the state illustrated a huge problem with it in cost. We know we've got a huge issue with the budget. These are expenses that hopefully we can bring down. Today, this evening, the mayor's going to have the state of the city, he's going to release the budget, and I had been told it's not a very popular budget, it's not going to be a very positive budget. So every dollar we can save is a dollar that we can continue providing services. So if we can do that, Mr. President, CAO, CLA, work with ITA, departments, analyze it, and May 18th, I think you said, Mr. Clerk?
30 days would be May 18, correct.
That'll work for you, ITA?
Yes, certainly.
So are you, is that in the form of a motion?
Yes.
And so would you restate it?
To instruct the CAO, the CLA, to work with ITA, and departments, all departments, to analyze and review the reduction of self, city cellphones, and report back in 30 days.
Second? Mr. Englander, seconds. Mr. Krikorian. Pass. Mr. Cardenas.
Yeah, I just, again, I just want to make sure that people understand that we've made tremendous progress on this. We commenced with the formal process about three years ago, and over the last 18 months, we've had a lot of good information and a reduction in cost as well. So I want to thank all the staff for their hard work. But I also want to warn us that any time we want to follow Governor Brown's way of doing things, be careful, because half the time, people sue him on it, half the times he wins, half the time he loses. And lawyers cost money, too, so we might even lose money that way. No, I'm just saying, Alakon referred to Governor Brown asking employees to use their personal phone.
Okay.
It doesn't necessarily mean that they wouldn't be subject to Public Records Act, et cetera.
Yeah, and my issue is strictly, the taxpayers are paying for it. We need to get the information. Whatever we can reduce, we can reduce.
Okay. Mr. Alakon.
I believe, Mr. Zine, your language was, review a reduction in cellphones?
Analyze and review.
A reduction in cellphones?
Cellphone issued.
City cellphone usage or the cost?
Number of units and usage, number of units and usage. The number of units, number of instruments, and the usage, and ultimately, the cost.
Okay.
Okay.
If you add the cost on it, I think it makes...
The cost, right. It's all about money.
Okay, let us, on this item, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 eyes.
Okay, Mr. Clerk, I believe this would bring us to item 13, held by Mr. Englander, or am I wrong?
You are correct, sir.
Okay. Mr. Englander.
Thank you. And I've got Russ Strazella from Contract Administration. Thank you for your patience in waiting today on this as well.
Mr. Englander, I have one card. You want to hear it now or after?
Sure, no, first, please.
Wait, oh, wait, I'm informed, we don't have to take it?
I'm sorry?
We already had a hearing on this item?
We did.
Okay, so then, you're, it's you.
Okay. Well, with that, this is... Well, with that, this is an issue, members, that I've been working on, actually, for many, many years, and it affects all of our districts in the city of LA to the tune of tens of millions of dollars. We've got over 10,000 permits for utility installations on city streets and repairs that are done throughout the year. We have over 200 utilities, contractors and subcontractors that actually cut into our streets every day throughout the city of LA, and oftentimes, we have no idea who they are, and the work that they're doing fails inspection or actually never even gets inspected. In fact, most people aren't even aware that after a contractor, subcontractor repairs a street or cuts into a street to put in a utility, they're supposed to tag that street with a metal tag that shows who did it and when they did it. And I can't tell you the last time I actually found one of these metal tags in the street so we can track down the shoddy work, so we can track down and hold accountable the contractor or subcontractor that cut into the street. And if you look around the city, it's getting worse and worse every single day, and we're not putting more money in the streets, we're putting less money because we don't have the money. And so how do we solve this problem? And so with working with Contract Administration, we've been looking at this, and we've looked at best practices and what the city does, and there are code sections and sewer contract insurance and requirements when they're doing sewer work, which doesn't hold true and doesn't carry through on work for utilities. And so, Russ, if you could, walk us through sort of what the process is. Is this a real problem? Are we talking about, or do we see this citywide? Is this an isolated incident? And what should we do to fix it? Thank you.
My own?
Yes, go right ahead.
Thanks. Councilman, you're correct. It's a, it's a citywide systemic issue. There are several major elements of what you bring to the table that are quite important to each of your constituencies. And I've had the pleasure through the years to work with all of your deputies on many of these problems. Last year, I handled 200 deputy-generated or council-generated complaints at my desk, and the supervisor who worked for me handled roughly the same amount. And those investigative problems go out to the staff, which is, you know, few and far between nowadays because of the budget problems. We do field investigations, et cetera. On the day I testified for the Public Works Committee for Councilman Bosiano, I shared with him an incident that happened right out in front of his council offices the day before, where a supervisor that works for me approached a contractor that closed, closed the street in front of San Pedro City Hall arbitrarily to do some work, and most people sitting around in their offices or walking down the street would have thought that everything was okay. But that contractor had no permission to close the city right away from the Board of Public Works or from any law enforcement agency. It just happened my supervisor was there. Just this morning, I handled an investigation, I did a preliminary investigation and gave it down to staff that was given to me from the city attorney's office. There is pending litigation on an incident that happened two years ago. Apparently, a contractor did some kind of utility hookup in West Los Angeles, broke something, and we looked in our records. I looked on the permit records, all my inspector's records, I have it in dispatch to check. We can't see any record of our inspectors knowing that anybody was out there in that vicinity from the time the permit was issued. This is an endemic and systemic issue, and I know many of you know about these things where we try to help and, and chase things around in your districts. Most problems in the right of way are human caused. There are problems from construction, and they require nowadays different corrective means than what's currently available. The paradigm has shifted. The, I learned something today. I'm very grateful that I was here today, because the wonderful presentation that I got to see and hear from the rabbi and the gentleman survivor from the Holocaust, if I can take a minute of your time, it, we, many councilmembers made a remark about how, how it's really abysmal that human beings in a society or a civilization can sink to the level that, of that era and, and do such, commit such acts. How does a society get there, get to that point where it's not even a society anymore, preys on its own? Chief Bratton, former police chief, had, had a, I don't know if it was a theory or was his little saying, but he, he talked about broken windows. And this was a, a theory that he had about chiefing and policing. And he, his, his basing mantra was that a, a society slides slower down into, or a civilization slides slower down into lawlessness and whatever have you, when people start ignoring the small things. And his analogy was, when you stop paying attention to who's breaking the windows, you don't try to find out who's breaking the windows, people think that's not a big deal, something more important's happening. We allow the windows to be broke, then later, rocks are thrown. People don't ignore that, then stuff is stolen, then punches are thrown, and it goes down. And pretty soon, we're so desensitized that the, the small things that could have stopped it have gotten into much larger and uglier things. This is, this motion, we're very proud to be able to, to help with. And it has to do with something a lot more serious than broken windows, but it has to do with the kind of behavior that many people that are in the construction business in, in our city seem to not have much respect for anymore, and that's the common courtesies and the ordinances and the requirements and permits, to simply do what they're supposed to do for their neighbors and for your constituents, and show their city respect, and when you go into the right of way to cut it up, let the people know who are supposed to know and do, do the repairs correctly. There are, we've been asked to come to you and, and give you some ideas about what we've been brainstorming. We don't have a, a full report, obviously, for you today, but if the council votes on Mr. Englander or Mr. Fuesart's motion, we'll come back to you with a detailed report. But we have an idea about what could help, and we've shared it with councilmen. Very briefly, I'll share it with you. There are several categories of corrective means. Punitive action by the city, that's fines, penalties, they're of the administrative sort, they don't do a whole lot of good. You can give somebody a ticket, they paid a price, but your streets are still in disrepair, and there's nobody to fix them. Permitting only selective firms to work in the streets, we cannot license contractors as a city, that's the Department of this Consumer Defairs, so we can't grant a city license. But we can raise the bar for performance by making contractors or their clients accountable to, for cost to the public. So putting back repair costs directly onto a permitee or a contractor is a viable option, we believe, if the process is both fair and legally appropriate. So the right, to, to property mitigate damage to or failure to restore public, the public right of way, the city could, should consider maybe having a mechanism whereby repairs are made in an expedient fashion, and then the permitee or contractor or its surety is backcharged. The challenge is whatever, are to make such a program as cost-neutral to the city as possible, and that's our goal, to make this as least cost impact to the city as possible. And it is, basic concept is to require permities, any permities or contractor doing work in the public right of way, to have either increased bonding capacity or provide means in advance for the city to effect such repairs itself. That has to do with recommendation, Mr. Englanders, to look at modifying part of the municipal code, particular section 64, parts of it, section 64, 15.1, wherein he's suggesting that we look at making it quite a bit like the bonded sewer contractor program, but make it for all utility contractors, period. So they have to have increased bonding capacity.
Okay, well, let me, let me, because we're way over it.
Yeah.
And we have a couple of members that also want to speak.
Let me just close it real quick unless there's other members that want to speak. So, members, what I'm asking is, if you can vote on this, what that would do is ask them to come back with a new code that would be similar, very similar to what we're doing on the sewer code as well, making and mandating that the contractors and subcontractors have liability insurance, deposits, surety bonds, et cetera, and as well, to put some teeth into it, that if they don't follow the instruction of notifying Contract Administration prior to doing the work, which most of them are not doing now, they're failing to do that. If they get caught doing that, or closing a city street without permission, which they're doing every single day, then the penalty shall be something of, they are not allowed to work on a city street for X amount of time, two years, three years, something severe. It's costing us millions of dollars, it's a very serious issue, and so what I'm asking is your support to draft the new code to come back, and then we would vote on the actual code.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Councilmember. In your report, I'd like to suggest that we also assist technology so that you could have the capacity, if any one of us with our phones, or anyone in the public sees a street that is not essentially meeting the standards, that we have a way of taking that picture and sending it to either, to the, to the most appropriate person that can respond. I know, and I want to thank you for your work. I know my office calls you quite a bit. We've resurfaced streets, and within months, someone cuts it open, and when they're done, there's about an inch to two inches difference. People's tires are getting blown out, they're, they need to be balanced, and there's money being spent in communities that can't afford this. So I'd like to respectfully ask if we could get some accountability by using technology today so we can get a quicker turnaround. The Contract Administration is one entity, but you have Bureau of Sanitation, you have DOT, you have four or five departments that assume contracts when they cut open our streets. And for years, we talked about correlating these efforts so that when we resurface a street, that within months, they'll come back and cut it right up again. It's a loss, it's, it's a waste of time and a waste of money. Now, it's a huge city, miles and miles of streets, but with technology today, I would assume we could at least get to a place where we can coordinate timeframes. When Water and Power has to check a line, and you have sewer working on a parallel process on the same street, but two contracts from different universes, it's like they're not touching each other.
Right.
Does Contract Administration have the ability to at least see geographically who's lined up for the next six months, or next year, or four months, to say they're targeted for opening up the street? Is there any way of doing that?
We want to improve that process, and we're working with Bureau of Engineering. That's, their part of it is called the Public Works Reservation System, where the permits are geo-coded and put on a map. The, there's an issue with public reservation system, it's not the fault of the system, but it does happen to be an honor system. So to directly answer your question, someone puts in for a permit, and they say they have a projected start date and a projected end date. That's geo-coded so that all the permities that are working on that street, as you would mention, are supposed to look on Bureau of Engineering's master map to see if they're in conflict with another bit of work. It doesn't always happen, so when they call for inspection, they have already set up the permit and they mobilize. And we were gonna, we're gonna cover quite a bit of that, Councilman Reyes, in our report, how we're gonna try to improve that and put some restrictions on it.
Yeah, and again, it's coordination, but I look forward to that report. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Rosendahl.
Yeah, it's a fascinating discussion. I had an example, just anecdotally, where I had a terrible street, people were really upset, we went ahead and we started our work. I went over there during the holidays, and I saw the construction going. I left. One of the citizens there followed me in his motorcycle to the next stop, and he said, you know, there's a DWP water pipe that's old and corroded. And what happens is, they redo the street, everything looks great, and then a year later, it's, it's destroyed. So I called the head of DWP at the time, I had him go check on that pipe. He said, you're right, Councilman, it's an old pipe that should have been replaced. So then, I stopped what we were doing with the street work until he got in there and re, re-put in the pipe, so that when we did it, it would never be a problem again. Is the coordination with DWP, Southern Cal, and all this in such a way that we got that cooperation? Because I have another project coming out called Scattergood, which is DWP's going to go down Centinela. And, and, and obviously, that's a big deal, that's like a congested street, we're gonna do it maybe in the night and this and that. But I just want to make sure everybody's coordinating, right hand, left hand, all the other utilities. I got concerns right now in Sepulveda going into the valley. And you're terrific, because I know you're taking a meeting on 104th Street in aviation of a Southern Cal, we're trying to deal with it. But will this help us get that all out there so that we don't keep tearing up streets and re-tearing up streets and all of that?
Thank you, Council. That's, that's a very good point. The president of our Board of Public Works is called coordination meetings, special coordination meetings, to try to address this issue. It is a huge city, and I would not really want to tell you that the major utilities are not cooperative in it. It's just, it's a big, big, big issue with a lot of overlays and, and moving into the new world with new technology, like Councilman Reyes mentioned. We're moving forward baby steps, but there's a lot of work going on in, in how to coordinate utilities, and it's happening in, in our commission office. So we will be glad to keep you involved in that also.
Okay. And we then developing some kind of a checkoff list so that all of them are on the same wavelength?
Yes, sir. The, the perfect world scenario is, would be, everything showed up with everybody else, people wouldn't even mobilize if the, there was something else in the way there or planned. The scheduling would reflect moratoriums. It's a, like a big Venn diagram kind of thing, but, but we're, we're trying to get our, our head around it, and we're working, we're moving forward.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Englander.
Once again, what we're gonna ask is, we'll work to come up with the new code, a municipal code. This is one of the, it's not a sexy issue, guys, but it's one of the ones that affects us every single day, and it's one of the most frustrating for so many people that are sitting in traffic, that see the shoddy work. We've got to go after these guys, because it's costing us money, it's affecting all of us.
Yes, sir.
And so I really appreciate, Russ, all your work as well. We'll come back with a new code draft for this body to vote on in the very, very, very near future and go after these. So thank you, sir, I appreciate it.
Our pleasure.
Okay, there are no more speakers on the queue. So on this item, if we could open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote?
Twelve ayes.
Okay, Mr. Clerk, at this time, I want to move to item 24.
That's 24, called Special for Cards, sir.
Yes, I have two cards. One is from Mr. Arnold Sachs, the other one is from Mr. John Walsh.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. See our new post, it's less than 48 hours old. And this concerns street furniture, which are, which always graffiti-covered, and I want to speak up in favor of you, members of the city council. You never rule me out of order when I praise you. Some of us over here complain that you do not pay attention when we speak, but you are even-handed about it, because you rarely pay any attention to Mr. Rosendahl. Okay, so, you know, I'm giving you credit where credit is due, and notice, they didn't say I was out of line when I spoke in favor of them. I can, I can talk forever praising you, I'll never be out of, out of order. Let's just say that we support the Lillian-Freeman Walkway, and incidentally, thank you for everything, Hollywood Community Plan. This concerns an area near Hollywood, we, two weeks postponed. HollywoodHighlands.org, goodbye, have a nice day.
Okay, on this item, let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That brings us where, Mr. Clerk?
Item 22, called Special for Cards.
Respectable city council members, Jefl Angelinos. Actually, endorsed with item 22, communication from Chair, Housing Community Economic Development, to, relative to authorization, to execute the first amendment to a loan agreement in settlement of community housing, and change the security for the loan, for the affordable housing project. Actually, actually, I endorse this item, but the language of this item is, sounds a little bit corny for me, not quite appropriate, because execute the first amendment to a loan agreement will actually leave, you know, quite, quite, quite room, you know, quite room for speculation, because which first amendment do I mean? I mean, first amendment of constitutional, first amendment of, of Los Angeles Municipal Code, I'm not sure. Well, actually, yeah. Change the security for a loan is still remains a mystery for me, you know. I don't understand, for instance, how can one change the security for a loan to make a more affordable housing project? Actually, I support, any kind of attempt, you know, to finance affordable housing, because Angelinos, the founder of Angelinos, need affordable housing, as the city is, you know, you know, real estate market is extremely overpriced and overrated, you know. And, well, affordable housing will allow Angelinos to avoid the suffering and dignity of poverty, you know, many of them, you know, are- Many of them, you know, many of Angelinos, you know, signed up for section eight housing programs with federal government, with state government, with city government. And actually, I believe that solving the crisis of real estate means more affordable, building more and distributing more affordable housing in a more expedient manner. And actually, will help revive city of Los Angeles, make it real great, make it real significant for all its inhabitants.
Okay, thank you, Mr. John Walsh. Mr. Walsh isn't here. On this item, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Next?
Item 23, called Special for Cards.
John Walsh, Arnold Sacks, Wayne Spindler.
The CRA lives. It never dies. So first, we have CRA, then we don't have a CRA. Now, Bloomingfield, yeah, he's, he's been anointed to be the next representative of CD3, behind the scenes, of course. But he's a real piece of work. Why do we need this? The state can't afford it. It's, it's nice when you can put billions of dollars and build whatever you want. We just all pay our property taxes and never get anything for it. But Eli Broad gets a beautiful garage out of it, so that's nice. That's exempt. Let the CRA go the way of the buggy whip, go the way of the space shuttle program. It's a boondoggle. Let it die. Rest in peace.
Okay, no speakers on the queue. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Thank you. Next?
Item 27, called Special for Cards.
Okay, on item 27, Arnold Sacks, Wayne Spindler, Arminik Norojanian. So Arminik, if you could come up behind Mr. Spindler.
All right. The lucky people of CD15. That's Janice Hahn's old place. So they're going to get tree removal and sidewalk repairs. Yay! And it's amazing, out of 15 council districts, one council district, and only one, is going to get some actual sidewalk repair and tree removal. Well, let's hope that when you remove a tree, you plant a new tree. And not those little stick figure trees like Indeniz Zine's district and Cardenas' district that when the wind blows, they blow them out into the street. A real tree. So we have a Department of Forestry, the city of Los Angeles. It's called the canopy cover that you're supposed to have the right kind of tree. So, good. This one I like. Vote yes.
Thank you, Mr. Norojanian.
Good morning, City Council members. Good morning, fellow Angelinos. Actually, I endorse item 27, the progressive resolution, you know, to fund tree removal and sidewalk repair activities in Council District 15, at least. Actually, one actually recommendations about, for council election, is actually, we found that, but salaries, general salaries, actually, total of general salaries, only $10,000. Infinity, small sum of money. And I asked City Council members to increase that amount 10 times, at least, in order for, for, you know, to pay, you know, real minimum wage, living minimum wage salaries, at least, for workers, you know, for, also salaries for contractors, you know. And, well, actually, because this is, this unit sum of $10,000 is not enough in these times of greater inflation, you know, inflationary growth, you know. When it, city of Los Angeles, I believe, should pay decent wages to workers and contractors and businessmen, you know, who hire workers, you know. And, you know, to do the street, tree removal and sidewalk repair activities. Well, actually, sidewalk, sidewalk repair activities. Well, actually, most of our sidewalk repair activities are not being done, let's say, where I live, in the area of District 8. Crenshaw Boulevard, for instance, is not being repaired for a long time. There are cracks where, Jefferson Boulevard as well, where cracks and potholes. And the city, you know, on 3113, refuses to fix things on time, you know, to fill those potholes or fix the cracks, you know, in my neighborhood in South Central Los Angeles, for instance.
Thank you. On this item, let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Mr. Clerk, where are we now?
Item 28, called Special for Cards.
Mr. Wayne Katerski and Arnold Sacks. So Mr. Wayne Katerski, please come forward.
Yep. Well, I always go by Katerski when we talk about corrupt things. And no right turn signs. When you drive down the 101 and you reach CD3 and you get off on Tampa, there's a little tiny sign, and it says, no right turn. And boy, you don't know, those little sneaky police officers, how many tickets they write because you can't see the sign. So when you have these no right turns, and you, it's not for public safety, it's for revenue increase. And I think there should be a rule, since Labonge isn't here, they shouldn't be allowed to pass it until he's here because he should jump up and, and do what he usually does. You know, he could give the history of why this corner of Melrose and 6 needs a no right turn sign. I'm sure he could go back to the history in the 1890s when the horses used to cross there and how dangerous it is for the pedestrians. But vote no on this. And if you vote no on it, you'd send the right message.
Okay, on this item, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Thank you. I think next, Mr. Krikorian, add your, whatever you suggest.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Questions that, that we needed to have resolved were resolved. This is a very reasonable settlement of case involving soil movement. And we heard it in Budget and Finance, and I would request your aye vote unless members have questions that they wish to present.
Okay, Mr. Clerk, could you read the item?
The recommendation for item 32 is as follows. In the case entitled Terranik Kuchekian and others versus City of Los Angeles, there is a recommendation to expand $150,000 and to sell city-owned lots located at 3557, 3561, and 3565 Algenet Drive and 16654 Calniva Drive in settlement of the aforementioned matter.
Thank you. So on this item, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Mr. Clerk.
Mr. President, council has motions for posting and referral.
They are posted and referred.
There are excuses on the desk. Councilmember Labonge requests to be excused, excuse me, on April 20. Councilmember Wesson requests to be excused on April 27. Councilmember Perry requests to be excused on May 16. Councilmember Buscayeno requests to be excused on May 22. And Councilmember Wesson requests to be excused on June 12.
Without objection.
The desk is clear.
Okay, announcements, members, announcements. Mr. Cardenas.
Yes, at this moment, it's just an announcement. Apparently, it's been reported that Dick Clark has passed at the age of 82. We'll get the information from his family and, and we'll make a proper adjournment in his memory. In addition to that, I'd like to say that today, I'm going to start a tradition in announcing how we're, we're doing when it comes to the California Pet Lovers License Plate. Unfortunately, as we're all aware, over a million dogs and cats every year are turned into shelters. And approximately half of them, 500,000, are euthanized every year. But the California Pet Lovers License Plate will help us turn our state into a no-kill state. Because the license plate will provide, if we get, get it done on a large scale, permanent funding source for spay and neuter programs. These free and low-cost programs are desperately needed to help address the unnecessary killing of those, so many animals throughout California. The plates declare spay and neuter save lives, reminding other drivers to do their part in the fight against pet overpopulation. To join the California Veterinary Board, Petco, the Humane Society, Catherine Heigl's Foundation, Caesar Milan's Foundation, et cetera, and many other organizations, what we need to do is spread the word that in order for the first licensed plate to be sold and put on a vehicle, there has to be 7,500 pre-ordered license plates. And at this time in California, as of April 18, only 4,400 license plates have been pre-ordered. So I'd just like to remind everybody watching Channel 35, all Angelinos and people who care about animals, and for us to get down to a no-kill state and a no-kill city, please go to the website, petloversplate.com, petloversplate.com, to order your license plate. And every year, a portion of the funds will go to spay and neuter programs, such as the one in the city of Los Angeles, so we can do a better job of saving animals' lives. Again, we're short 3,100 license plates in order for the state to start producing them and putting them out on the streets, on people's cars. We need to get to 7,500, and we've only reached 4,400. So every week, I'm going to announce how far we've gotten and how far we need to go. Thank you.
Mr. Cardenas, who introduced that legislation?
Was it me who introduced the legislation? Sit down. Oh, Solario, I think.
Were you there when we introduced the be a patriot license plate?
Yes.
All you have to do is eliminate the threshold.
Yes, there's legislation to try to give us an extension, but they're not looking to eliminate the threshold.
That's all I did. So the moment we voted on it, you people could start buying the plates. There was no threshold.
Correct, yes. And they have up until June of this year to get to 7,500. But there is legislation to extend it, to give us more time to get to 7,500.
Let's hope it occurs.
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Corretts.
I just want to add, I believe an answer to your question. I don't know that the governor's administration necessarily is wildly for this. There are some in the bureaucracy that don't really want to see it go forward. So we're trying as much as we can just to sign up the 7,500 people. And one of the things I'd encourage, we haven't done it yet, but I'd encourage each council member that has a newsletter that you send out to include that information in your newsletter. We're going to do that in the future newsletter soon and encourage, if all 15 of us did that, we, that alone could get us much closer.
Any other announcements? Okay, everyone in council, please rise for adjourning motions. Everybody, please rise. Adjourning motions, members. Okay, seeing none, oh, Mr. Zain.
Thank you. Mr. President, Cleo Doris Scoggins passed away April 14, 2012. Born in Alpi Louis, Louisiana, August 8, 1929, where she lived until she moved to Los Angeles in the 60s. Tiny city where she was born as an example of Southern comfort, hospitality, and pride. She exemplified that through her life. Served the city of Los Angeles for over 25 years as a staff employee of the Los Angeles Unified School District, running certain cafeteria operations at Dorsey High School, which was near her home, located on South Walton Place. Active in the SEIU, where she found the place showed her civic leadership, became one of Tom Bradley's charter supporters, a very vocal, loyal, and active supporter from the time he first ran for city council, through all of his successive elections in the mayor's office. She remained active in local community affairs by helping organize multiple neighborhood watch groups during her nearly 50 years living at South Walton Place, instrumental in helping the community obtain much-needed services from the local council office, the mayor's office, and various city departments and agencies. Cleo was married to Clyde W. Scoggins for nearly 50 years. They will have, they would have celebrated their 50th wedding anniversary in less than two years. Services will be held Inglewood Park Mortuary and Cemetery on Saturday, April 21, 11:30 a.m. Flowers may be sent to the mortuary on Friday, April 20, to be displayed during the family viewing time from 3 p.m. to 8 p.m. Inglewood Park Cemetery and Mortuary is located at 720 East Florence Avenue in Inglewood. She is survived by her husband Clyde, a decorated Korean War veteran who retired from a longtime management role at MTA. Also surviving, her daughter, one of California's female law enforcement officers, her son, who's a personal friend, Dr. Greg Thomas, two grandchildren, two great-grandchildren, and dozens of cousins and in-laws. May she rest in peace. That again, a wonderful lady, Cleo Doris Scoggins.
Maybe all members on that, Mr. Zain.
Thank you.
Members, Mr. Corretts.
Yes, of course, we had our Holocaust remembrance service and ceremony earlier, but I would just like to adjourn in the memory of all who were lost during the Holocaust.
All members. Any other adjourning motions? Then this council meeting is adjourned.